And I need an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Most to approve.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Um, I don't have, let's see, we don't have any changes for the agenda?
Not to my knowledge.
I have no presentations and nothing for the consent agenda, moving directly into debate, um, elected officials.
Yeah, we're gonna ask a tax commissioner, Mr. Bridges, to come up and present his, uh, Ola Bona report for.
Morning.
Good morning.
Who?
I'm not. No.
Uh, do have the Nola Bona report, basically in my old world, that means bad debt, okay? Can't collect. Think you have the report in front of you? Uh, the last two pages break down, the total is about nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars, which, uh, in the scheme of things is way less than one percent of our taxes due. Lucky and blessed with that number, but, uh, the last two pages kind of break down, um, what, where these write-offs come from, and most of it's from boats or businesses closing. They don't know to file the final personal property tax returns. That's where's comp them, send them a bill, or we send them a bill. Case it a little bit, but we don't spend too much good money going after no money. Um, but boats continue to be a big problem. People sell them, they sink them, they do whatever they want to with them, and, you know, they just disappear. But, any questions?
Yeah, some of the stuff, it says from oh one, I'm, I'm, I know we have, or thirteen, I'm sorry. Done this before every years. It did, there, are there still things hanging out there from Fort?
There's, there's a lot of things that just hang out there and we're, we're trying to get them all. Sometimes there's a bleed, but you.
Gary, do you have a question?
Now, the numbers got big. Right now, like I said, it's like points, so.
Move to consent.
Can we do it to consent or do not? To debate? All right.
Good.
Second. Second, so move, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bridges. All right, moving on to the county manager who, um, Mr. Sotter, you're acting as.
Take his place today.
Hey, so tell me about the State Properties Commission.
What we have here is a, we received a letter from the State Properties Commission desiring to exercise the option to extend the, um, for the Department of Driver Services, this is a one dollar lease located over here off of Evans Lock Road, staff has recommended approval.
Gentlemen?
Is it just for one year, or is it, how often do we do this?
We, we, this will end next year, one year, but we renew it every year. One of those ones, if we want a DDS in Columbia County, we had provided a place for them.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next. Oh, DeFacts was first.
Sorry, DeFacts, same thing, DeFacts, sorry. Got happy with the finger.
They move backwards and do the DeFacts one.
But this is the, uh, extension of the lease for DeFact for a twelve month period, an amount of seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cent per month.
They pay us.
They pay us to have the building.
Move to consent.
Second.
This is the same spot out, across the sheriff's office.
Tried to get him to move into a nice new building, but they didn't, thought it was too nice and new.
Haven't moved in second, and we'll move that to consent, and now we have community supervision.
Received a letter from the State Properties Commission wanting to extend their option for another twelve months for the state property, uh, for the, uh, community supervision. Uh, they do provide an annual rate of ten dollars, this is the JCA, and staff has recommended approval.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved, out of curiosity, they've waited a little bit late in the game to say, hey, we'd like to renew. What if we said no? Then in two weeks, they'd just be out?
Find another place. They were prepared to find their own place prior to putting them in the JCA, so they would, they'd, they'd find their own location.
Feels like it's very last minute. Very good, all right, and we have Ahmed renewal.
Yes, ma'am, we do provide vision care to our employees. They are paying this entirely out of their pocket. There is no county match for this. There is an increase in the rate, uh, the rates are noted here. There's a slight typo in employee plus children. The current rate should actually be ten seventy-three, not a dollar seventy-three. But the new rates are included. This is a forty-eight month renewal, effective one, one of twenty-three, and staff has recommended approval.
Gentlemen?
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Six and a half for you is a, an agreement, uh, with Mission Square. They've brought in Mezzaro Financial Investment Management Group. They basically do a, a review of all the funds that we are part of. They're basically a, an audit, I guess you could say, of what our funds invest in. It also provides us with some coverage in case we are, um, by an employee for not properly managing their money. Uh, there's, there is no cost to us for this. It's actually part of our existing plan with, um, Mission Square. Staff has recommended approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, I just want to make a comment that a lot of folks who don't work in this, in, in the human resources world, don't realize what all goes into providing this kind of, this kind of benefit for the employees, because not, you're not just, here, let me take five dollars out of your check and go deposit it over here. A lot of oversight and, and diligence that goes with it, and if you mess it up, you know, the employees can come back to you and say thank you to, to that department, Dr. Carney, for taking care of this, because this is, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it really is, so.
We had our update last, week before last, and there provides the county over a hundred million, a hundred and four, get our numbers, it's, we have quite a lot of county money, employee money invested with this group.
And it falls on the employer to be very responsible, make sure the right funds are in the menu for them to choose from. It's, it's a lot, so, so thank you for doing all of that for, for the staff. Okay, um, next, amendment to the comprehensive policy, tell me about that.
So currently, our comprehensive policy manual requires that if a, if an existing employee wants to apply for another position in the county, they must notify their immediate supervisor prior to doing so. Changes that we're asking here is to actually remove that requirement, but they don't have to advise his or her supervisor prior to applying. Um, we've had instances where employees are scared, afraid to apply for another job. They don't want to notify their supervisor that they want another job and not sure they're gonna get the other job. Gives them a little level of comfort to kind of step out there, maybe advance their career in the county without getting on the supervisor's bad side. Now, we do a lot to prevent any kind of backlash from an employee wanting to better themselves or move to another position. But this is requiring them to make a notification that, hey, I don't like being here, I want to go somewhere else, so we're trying to make a.
When does the supervisor become aware?
Typically, what we would do is if, for instance, if, if Leanne wants to hire somebody from, from Kyle, they would end up talking to each other and saying, hey.
So there's no formal process?
There would not be a formal process if we take this out. But this is a supervisor, so if you have a maintenance worker, they're talking to.
Yeah, I'm just dealing with the chain of command to a certain degree. I mean, there are, there are weaknesses in this change.
Interesting.
From the aspect of, they'll have to run the business or the county, and so.
Absolutely, you do. If the employee were to quit tomorrow, they don't, they notify us they're walking out the door. It'd be the same situation. They're not quitting the county, they're just.
Not necessarily, but move to debate.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So moved to debate, and we will take that up later. We've got one more on this, on this section.
The Community Correctional Services Agreement with Client Management System, this is our, um, our probationary services, this is with our probate court. Their contract expires in September, and Judge Page is asking to enter into a new agreement, so staff has recommended approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, and Mr. Kennedy is on vacation, so you're filling in room as well.
Sean will come up and.
Okay.
Hey, Sean.
Sean?
Hey, everyone. How are y'all? Um, the, the first item I have for you guys is, uh, the renewal agreement number two with Serious Environmental Services for the disaster debris management. Um, what this does is, like, like it says, for debris management, this is the second renewal, there will be two more after this, and just understand, we don't pay any money into this until we activate it, should, uh, we find a need to do so. Staff recommends.
Yeah, we only used them once or twice, to my knowledge.
Yeah, actually, during this, we haven't used.
Not under this contract.
Right, not under this contract, we haven't used.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Um, the second item I have is renewal agreement for debris tech. This is also renewal number two for the disaster debris monitoring service. Same, same things apply here, is that we do not have to pay them any money upfront. This is the second renewal, there will, will be two more after this. Um, staff recommends approval.
This one is where they help us keep records to get money back from FEMA or whatever, okay.
Move to consent.
Honoring.
Second.
So moved, next.
The third item I have is a, is a, a new contract with the U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Water Resource Investigations. Basically, what this is, is stream gauges. What we're doing is we're asking for two new stream gauges at Yuchi Creek and Reed Creek. What this is gonna do, um, it's kind of a, a long drawn out process. The reason why we're, we're doing it for five years is so we don't have to pay two separate individual installation fees of almost twenty-five thousand dollar per stream gauge. And, uh, what hopefully this does is, over time, with the specific water level discharge, the, these two creeks are listed on the EPD's Impaired Water Bodies three or three D list, and hopefully what we're gonna do is eventually, after looking at all this data over a period of at minimum five years, get that off of there, and that'll help us with building and moving forward without having to go through, uh, so many different hoops and whatnot. Uh, staff recommends approval if you don't have.
Also benefit the Stormwater Department, they'll be able to monitor creeks, see flows, see how flows are affected as something comes along. It'll help us figure out how we need to modify systems to help prevent localized flooding. There's a lot of other stuff we can do with this, more than just give this off for an impaired list.
Do we currently have one of these in place?
The county is, we do not, but there is one in the county, um, and USGS actually has a few around here, but none of them are in a partnership with us. And none of them are, are on Reed Creek and Yuchi Creek.
Is there a, do we need a person on our staff to monitor this?
It's actually a live feed. We'll get a live feed from this, and I can show you all that, that, uh, what's already out there. Um, we don't, it's just, it's kind of a, a neat thing to see where we're going over the next five years. Did this with the Water Department, us, and Stormwater and collaboration, so we could see during rain, during drought, you know, what if the dam releases too much? Um, but it's also an environmental impact, too.
Yeah, what, what are we gonna do with it? That's probably practically the benefit, what do we, I mean?
We now, and if you want to move this to debates, we can get you information, but between now and Tuesday, we can get you a nice bulleted list, because it does affect more than just EMA. It affects Stormwater, it affects Water Utility, um, all the stuff we have to do right now because it's an impaired stream, the testing we have to do on it. If we can get this off that list, it'll, it'll alleviate a lot of requirements, it'll help us with permitting for future discharges, future intakes. There's a lot of benefits behind this, but let us put a good long list together for you and.
Will provide the official documentation to help get us off those lists.
Correct, plus other benefits of knowing how to manage our systems further, because we now have true data.
What department would pay for this?
Ours.
EBT for the first.
First year, and then for the next years, we will budget it.
Move to cons, uh, move to debate, excuse me.
Wait, make, uh, second.
So moved, we'll talk about it in debate, thank you. Um, let's move on to Internal Services.
The first item I have for you is a grant for our new Judicial Circuit. They have been awarded a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to the, to start up our own Accountability Court. We are currently part of the Augusta Richmond County Judicial Circuit Accountability Court. This way, we will have our own. The grant, it will fund a program director and case manager, treatment services, and other operational costs. It is for a one-year period, and the total amount is three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. There is a match of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars. This will come from participant fees, those that decide to be part of the Accountability Court as part of their sentence.
Well, they have to get this renewed every year?
Yes.
So this is something that's available from, this is a state grant?
Yes, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, yes.
And we can get it every year? That's something that goes on, like, because this only goes to next June, so then who pays the three hundred thousand dollars a year after that?
They will reapply for this grant.
I want to make sure it doesn't get moved to the general fund.
Right.
Move to consent.
Uh, second.
So moved, next.
The next item is renewal of our property and liability insurance with ACCG. This is also for the next fiscal year, July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The net contribution increase is about twelve point eight percent, or just over sixty-one thousand dollars. Half of that is due to our growth in our properties, the other half just being market and reinsurance cost increases. You see here the discounts and the dividend credits we received. I would like to note that we did issue a request for quotes back in February with a response deadline of March tenth. No quotes were received.
Really?
Yes, we did get some interest, we got a lot of questions, we were able to view how many companies downloaded our information. Uh, we based it on our current coverage levels that we have, so that we would be comparing apples with apples, but we received no quotes. Therefore, um, staff does recommend that we, uh, renew with ACCG at the cost shown here.
So I assume with no quotes, they couldn't, did they know what the bid was? In other words, they couldn't match the benefits for twice?
I, I feel like they probably just, with our coverage and, um, the amount of liability coverage we have, that there's just no other company large enough to really, or wanted to take us on.
But at the same time, a lot of private insurers, uh, on the private side, would look at this and say, oh, they're already with ACCG, which is an industry, you know, an industry thing, which is almost always the best.
And I did include, for your information, a list of other Georgia counties, um, and consolidated governments that are currently with ACCG, just if you were curious.
I appreciate you trying to get bids. I, I ask for that every time we see this, and did we? I'd love to find somebody local that could do this and spend the money locally in it.
It'd be hard to beat these prices, too.
And I also included, um, just for your information, a list of other services we do get from ACCG as being a, as being a member of that, um, group. It's not just the, you know, insurance coverage or the liability coverage. They do provide a lot of good training and, and other things for us.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, thank you. One more?
The final item I have for you is rejection of bid number two zero two two zero zero one.
Move to consent.
Stop. Sorry? No, y'all.
That was easy.
Go ahead.
Trying to tell you.
Well.
I was just having fun.
Interestingly enough, um, we forgot to reject this bid. We received it back, I think, in February, and, um, for quite a few trucks, and we only received bids for our half-ton trucks, none of the three-quarter tons or the one-ton. And the half-tons were fifty-two thousand dollars over budget, so we would like to reject it and try again.
Yeah, I think if you wait six months. I've already moved.
So moved. Anything else, Ms. Reese? That's it, thank you. Mr. Blanchard, how much money are you spending today?
Quite a bit, ma'am.
That's what I figured. Let's talk about it.
All right, um, if you'll indulge me for a second, I want to, uh, to tell you how these two are related, because these items are, are very much related. Uh, the first one, uh, that you'd have before you is the Justice Center Surveillance Replacement with A three Communications. Um, that has to do with all the cameras that we have in the Justice Center right now, and, and replacing the existing analog cameras with digital. The second item is Justice Center Network Upgrade. Um, I'll give you more detail on that in just a couple of minutes, but I wanted to let you know that network upgrade is critical and absolutely hundred percent necessary to the surveillance upgrade. So it's really a kind of a, I'm gonna address them separately, but it is kind of a package deal.
We do the cameras, but we don't do the network upgrade, it doesn't.
This is in our courthouse or in?
Courthouse.
Okay, sir. I was about to say, because when you use the word obsolete, oh, the tax layer, I'm, I thought everything was actually fairly fresh.
It is, it is fresh over there, uh, not so fresh.
The Justice Center, this is next door right here.
That's correct, and, uh, to get into more detail on that one, the first item is for the Surveillance Replacement with A three Communications. Uh, right now, we have about forty or surve, forty surveillance cameras that are in that building. Um, those forty, uh, some of them date to the, the very beginnings when that building was constructed. So, uh, you know, uh, we've joked about it and said, hey, the eighties called and they want their camera system back. It is a closed circuit system, basically, with all the cabling from all these cameras going back to their security room, so there's only one place that you can do it. Um, you might remember that there was an incident in Fulton County a few years ago where a prisoner got loose, killed, I think, a judge or a bailiff, and then there was a local connection with a, a woman he took hostage. That situation caused, uh, the state, I think the Sheriff's Association and the Superior Court, uh, Association to get together and come up with a courthouse, uh, security standard. So what our sheriff's office has done is they've looked at that standard, and they've worked on building a new system, or they, they basically described to IT, this is what we'd like to do. IT worked with, um, with vendors in order to come up with, uh, the quote that I have here today. In essence, it would replace the forty, uh, old analog obsolete cameras with their closed circuit solution with a digital camera solution that would integrate with our current, um, security system, that the people that are at the, uh, Justice Center will be able to, the cameras there can be monitored from the sheriff's office. And they'll be able to see them wherever, you know, the sheriff's office command and control is located. Um, the cameras will, will be new, um, obviously. Um, and again, everything's digital, so they'll have all the, the tools that come along with that, the digital, uh, zoom, uh, that the existing analog cameras where they have fault with them. Um, I'll also say that with the, uh, analog cameras they have right now is that, um, they're failing at a pretty spectacular rate. Um, and rather than replace them with old analog cameras, it makes more sense to go with this project. The quoted cost of replacing that system, which would include cameras, installation, licensing, configuration, is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars and seventy cents. Uh, we are going to ask if we could fund this project at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, simply because of supply chain issues. By the time we turn around, something costs more, uh, and that's the way of the world right now, and, uh, it would be really nice if, uh, if that would get fixed. I don't know if we're gonna see that anytime soon, but when we've ordered cameras, um, usually there is a delay, and what we want to avoid is having to come back and tell you, we've got to spend a thousand or two thousand more for this other part, which was not available, and we have to get it ordered from another source, you know, so on. Um, the, this project is being funded through TAVT funds, and staff recommends approval.
This, uh, quote is dated April twenty-ninth. Is the price still good?
Price, uh, they, they did actually, between the time I submitted this and, and today, they did submit an updated price, and it went up nine hundred dollars. So it's two, actually, two twenty-five, which means that under the, the two fifty.
Get and see, flipping through, um, the warranty, they'll, they'll service it for a year, or how long?
The annual cost going forward for, for all these cameras is twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so it's about two hundred and fifty dollars per camera. Once we buy the, the camera itself, um, there is a, a manufacturer's warranty with that, um, but the, the licensing, that's the amount that we would have to pay every year.
And with the, um, the yearly maintenance that we're talking about, would that come out of TAVT also? Or that would just have to go in general fund budget?
That'll be out of IT's.
And you're giving yourself a little cushion for the extras, or escalations in price or anything. Are we pretty confident it won't go over two fifty? Gentlemen?
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, and the second part of this is the network upgrade.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the current, uh, network equipment located in the building is very similar to the cameras. Uh, it, uh, I've been informed by staff that it dates to the actual building construction of the Justice Center. So we have network switches, uh, and cabling that's been in there for about twenty years. Um, which, if you look back, a, a network switch that's gonna last that long was not really a purchase, it's an investment. So this is not something, and I'll, I'll say this with this degree of confidence, is that by the time we have to replace the switches we're proposing to replace today, hopefully I'll be retired. Um, but we are replacing, uh, the old network equipment. See, and this is, this is where the cameras, them being digital cameras, affects the network. Because the current cameras are not on the network, and the old network gear that's in that building are only able to have a certain amount of capacity. So it's like the thing we've explained before with going from a two-lane road to, uh, uh, you know, a four-lane divided highway. In essence, that's what we're doing. Uh, there's only so much bandwidth that we can push through the existing network. So it's got to be upgraded in order to accommodate the cameras and the other work that's going on at the courthouse. Um, we worked with Presidio, who is our contractor for Cisco Network Equipment, to get a quote for this project. Uh, final price was one ninety-two, one eighty-nine, ninety-seven. Um, we also want to replace the fiber leading to the Justice Center. Uh, you're aware that there's a Justice Center renovation project that will be forthcoming in the next couple of years. Um, our current fiber going into that building is right where the new installations are going to take place. So we want to approach the building from a different direction to make sure that there's no disruption of, of, uh, fiber or services going into the building, uh, during the renovation process. So that's a roughly twelve thousand dollar cost for that. So, uh, the overall cost of the project is two oh four, one oh four sixty-five. Um, and, uh, I'm asking to fund this one for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the same reason that I had stated before with the other project. Um, this is being funded through, uh, Justice Center Garage and Renovations Splosh Funds, and staff recommends approval.
So the eleven, twelve thousand dollars for bringing the fiber in, um, at a different spot, if we do that now, we don't have to do it with the actual construction project.
Yes, ma'am.
And as we're changing these over, are we gonna have to close the Justice Center down at all? They want many downtime for the courtrooms?
The, there's any work that's required, it would be done in conjunction with works to determine when they're not using a certain courtroom. Uh, there could be work that takes place on weekends, work around the court's schedules.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Is there anything else, Mr. Blanchard?
No, ma'am.
You probably spend more money on my committee than anybody else.
Yeah, but he doesn't buy, he doesn't buy many trucks.
He money trucks. All right, I don't have anything else, um, in that section. Do we have any legal matters? Thank you, Mr. Driver. Staff reports.
First we have here is the FY twenty-two personnel savings. You have your numbers there. Be happy to get Jeff to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions.
How many, um, vacancies do we have right now? What?
Hundred and twenty, fifty-four of the sheriff.
And the rest of the staff is just having to take up the slack and get the work done, and we appreciate that. That's, that's a burden. Um, because sometimes we look at this and go, oh, look how much money we saved, but somebody's having to do the work, so, um, thank you for that report.
We, we did put a lot of folks on staff yesterday, thirteen, fourteen.
Oh, wow. On, it was a hundred degrees outside, and you were able to hire people for roads and bridges. That's pretty good, that's pretty good. Um, let's see, moving on to year-to-date budget report.
Yes, the first report I have for you is the budget report for the month ended May thirty-first. We should be operating around ninety-two percent at this time, and everyone is operating as they should be.
Excellent. Q and Splosh Update.
Second item is the sales tax update. This is for the month of April. We received just over two point nine million dollars. Our annualized percentage increase is at eleven point oh eight percent.
At this rate, our next report from you may be over three million dollars for May.
Or in the other direction because.
I was just thinking, as the price of things go up, if you're paying five dollars for bread, that's the sales tax on the same loaf of bread.
I talked to an accountant yesterday who mentioned that a hundred and fifty thousand dollar salary, it was at four, two kids, married, that, uh, they would have received nine thousand dollars tax-free from federal government. So he said, I didn't grasp, he, he said this to me, I didn't grasp how much money went out to folks, and he said, they're, they're spending it, so.
Wow.
I didn't, I didn't see any of that. I don't know what's up with that, but. You just need a better CPA, I reckon.
And is there anything else for the Splosh Update?
That's yours here than I.
Ma'am, and the final report is the investment report for your review.
Good, I have no questions on that.
And everything we have in investment is very, very low risk. We're not gonna.
Correct. In fact, we would love to get, uh, more local institutions giving us those, um, liquid accounts for like a percent.
Oh, gee.
That was nice when, when that happened.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, man, very good. Thank you for those reports, I appreciate everybody who prepares all those for us. Do we have any commissioner participation, public comment? Staff comment? I have nothing for executive session, so we will adjourn. We'll be back in.
Three minutes?
Three minutes, thank you.